The like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I make the motion to add to an agenda discussion of the Susquehanna Valley Community Education Project Funding. Do I have a second?
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes. An executive session was held on January 19th and 24th to discuss possible litigation. Are there any public items, any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any comments? If you want to comment on something on the agenda? Okay, I guess there's no comments. So, appointment of VACU Council C. So, as we know, there were interviews held last week. The council met and came to a conclusion who we felt was the best fit for this position for the remaining two years. So, at this time, I make the motion to appoint Lisa Martina to this position. Do I have a second?
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Martina, can you please come up and take the oath of office? All right, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Lisa Martina.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office?
I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. And you may take your seat. They have to end each assignment. All right, so presentation of the YES program by CSI Representative Vicki Payne.
I'm going to do this, or do you realize?
Whichever is easier for you.
Hi everybody, I have my mask down just so you can understand me better. So, for anybody that does not know me, my name is Vicki Payne. I am a career counselor for the YES to the Future Program, which is the out-of-school youth program. Firstly, I would like to thank the City of Sunbury for allowing me to come here and talk about the YES to the Future Program to you here. So, first off, who are we? YES to the Future is an out-of-school youth program that serves youth ages 16 to 24. Our organization is run by the CSIU, the Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit in Milton. Out-of-school youth refers to young people who are not currently enrolled in school and have some kind of barriers to obtaining employment. So, we do have eligibility requirements or barriers to enroll somebody into the program. Our most common is high school dropout. We have about 25% of enrollees that are high school dropouts within the age of compulsory school attendance but has not gone to school, an English language learner, or English as a second language, subject to the juvenile or adult justice system, homeless or runaway, enrolled in the foster care system, pregnant or parenting, or disability. And note, this doesn't just fall into the realm of somebody that had a learning disability or an individualized education plan in school. We actually find that a lot of young people have anxiety and depression, which does fall under the 13 categories of disability, so we are able to enroll them for that. We also can enroll if somebody's low income or just needs additional assistance. If somebody receives food stamps with any kind of benefits, lie-heat, lie-walk, things of that nature, we could also enroll them as well. Even if a young person doesn't have any work history, sporadic work history, or if they've been fired from more than one job in the last six months, we could enroll them in our program and help them get situated. So, what all can we do? There is a lot that YES can assist with. We can assist young people to prepare for and succeed in education, training, and employment, which includes but is not limited to the assistance to obtain important documents such as certificates, social security cards, IDs, and driver's licenses. YES can provide along one, driving instruction training with a certified driving instructor. The YES program will pay for up to $700 of lessons, which equates to about 12 hours behind the wheel. We can help with financial and education support for people who want to earn their high school equivalency. We have an awesome classroom that's right across the street, the CSIU Adult Education, totally free classes if somebody wants to go back to school to obtain their high school diploma. If they are also co-enrolled with our program, YES, they could get all of that testing taken care of for free. They're typically $23 a pop, and you have to take five tests, so you do the math, that's a little over $100 that we would pay for contingent upon if they pass the test. Of course, they have opportunities to learn money management skills and banking basics. A lot of young people don't even know how to write checks, let alone balance checkbooks, so that's something that we saw as a need and included in our program. They could learn mentoring in the YES program, leadership skills, as well as professional networking. A recommendation for post-secondary, if these young folks want to go back to school, we can help them do all of that paperwork, applications, the FAFSA, the FIA, applying for grants, all of those things that come along with applying to school, we can help them with. Career exploration activities, interview preparedness, job shadowing opportunities, paid work experiences, and on-the-job trainings. At YES, we also offer two free training opportunities to young people. We have our AMP program and our Restaurant Ready program. So, AMP stands for Advanced Manufacturing Pre-Ablenessship, which is a short-term training, which is approximately 70 hours, that prepares participants for employment in manufacturing. Manufacturing is huge now. It's not your grandfather's manufacturing with these big machines. A lot of it's computerized. This is the future. So, in conjunction with Penn Tech up in Lansport, AMP is available to all YES participants. They will go up to Penn Tech, they will complete lab sessions in the classroom, they will have a professor there who will teach them, and it is such a great opportunity. We have a new cohort starting on February 2nd. All YES participants are able to enroll in that at no charge for them. Upon successful completion of the program, they will receive a free tablet, which will allow them to, you know, apply for jobs, create those resumes, give them all the skills that they would need to find employment in that area. We also offer a training called Restaurant Ready. If we have young folks that are interested in hospitality or the food service industry really booming right now, it is a training program that can be offered to them in order to increase those skills in that area. So, they also have the option to earn their serve safe certificate, so if anyone's familiar with food service, you need to have serve safe in order to be a food handler in the kitchen, so we would pay for them to get that, as well as the option to earn their Guest Service Gold certification, which is offered through the American hospitality industry, and it is a program that allows them to kind of improve upon those skills that they would need to work in the hospitality industry, again, at absolutely no cost to our participants. At YES, we offer paid internships. So, participants, along with the assistance of someone like myself, their career counselor, we will assist them in finding a field of interest they would like to gain work experience. So, career counselors will work alongside our business service team right upstairs at the Career Link, to help them find and make connections with area employers in the participants' fields of interest. So, why is a YES paid work beneficial to an employer? YES pays for 240 hours of a paid work experience. It allows for an extended interview. If interns are a good fit for your workplace culture, you can offer them employment when there are no obligations to hire. Participants have specific career goals and a desire to learn. You can gain an extra set of hands without the delay of hiring procedures with HR. Participants and employers have access to career coordinators for support and problem-solving if there is any issues with that young person. You can delay the cost of training a new employee, develop the future workforce by mentoring these young adults in our community, establish that pipeline for future career and goal meetings. You can strengthen your networking potential by collaborating with other people in the community. We also run all of their PAA clearances, and they are all paid for, which is your PAA State Police, PAA Child Abuse, and FBI fingerprinting. In addition, their liability insurance is all covered by the CSIU, so that would be free help and free everything to an employer. It's kind of a win-win situation. So, not only will the young person gain valuable work experience and a career that they are interested in, but you're getting free help. And a few of our local success stories, not everybody can see them, we do have a couple people here, these are all local young kiddos. We had Christian who came upstairs at the Career Link who was interested in a career of a diesel mechanic. Well, he needed his GED, so he enrolled in classes right here with the CSIU right across the hallway. He got a job shadow at Sunbury Motors, which quickly turned into a paid internship. He then enrolled in Central Pennsylvania Diesel Institute upon getting his GED. And once he graduated, Christian accepted a full-time diesel mechanic position at Sunbury Motors where he completed his paid work because he was able to do that networking. And as he went down the pipeline, he made those connections, and they hired him on full-time, and he is still employed there today. We have the next young lady, her name is Cassandra. She came to YES looking to get experience with business management. Through YES, she participated in some job shadows and found out that she really wanted to work at a radio station. So, we contacted 94KX of Sunbury Broadcasting, and she completed a paid work, which turned into full-time employment as their traffic director at 94KX. She's on target to get her degree from Lackawanna College, and she should be graduating at the end of this year. And Tucson is a pretty amazing young man. He came from out west, from a cold, like situation. He had no resources available to him. He had no education, no job, no money, nothing. He enrolled in YES, earned his GED rather quickly, started to get driving lessons from the YES to the Future Program, got his license. He was able to build a resume, get a paid work, and earn that work experience. He was able to build a resume, polish those soft skills, and rapidly got employment at Geisinger Medical Center in Dandell, where Tucson is just moving up the career ladder. And he also won in 2020 the Governor's Achievement Award, which the governor hand selects a young person that has pretty much achieved all odds. Everything was against this young man, not to succeed, but because he enrolled in the YES to the Future Program, he had those opportunities. So, I have a lot of literature here. I have business cards. I have a little bit of everything. If you know just one young person, whether they're couch surfing, school didn't work out, you know, they dropped out of school, and now they, you know, they're sitting at home, you're like, come on, you need to get a job. This is the program for them. Do they need to get their license? Do they, you know, need help securing those official documents, a birth certificate, things like that? Ship them our way. We serve North Thurlund Snyder and Union Counties, so if you know any young people, csiu.org/yes is on all of this literature. You can get started. It's a quick Google to Doc. It takes them less time to send a text message than to fill that out. If you know anybody, refer them to the program. Totally free, doesn't cost them anything, only their participation. So, I thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'll stick around a little and answer, but if not, appreciate it.
I have one quick question. Would you mind if we send this out to the Chigley School District, so?
They do have it.
Oh, they have it?
Yeah, they're familiar. We do work pretty closely with schools.
Okay.
But send it out.
Send it out again, Steve.
I work pretty closely with Michelle Urban, who's their transition coordinator.
Okay.
But YES, please send it to whoever you would like, in Woodbridge County or Union Counties, does not matter to me.
Awesome. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
No, thank you very much.
Sure. Any questions?
Thank you, Miss Martina. Appreciate it. Thank you for what you're doing.
Sure.
Regent Street update, Derek or Jim?
Well, they are done for, done the work, first for the season up till around April 15th, that probably will be a couple of hours for continuing. Excuse me, I do have a change order on here that just needs to be gone through the processes. So, I'm looking for a vote in affirmative for the change order for Regent Street that would, that in the amount of $9,736.76 that addresses cut-down inlets 1, 3, 4, and 7, install 15-inch tee, repair coupling at Front Street, and saw cut inlet boxes, change conduits across Front Street from 2-inch to 3-inch.
Second.
Martina? Right, is that how you say it? That's how you say it? Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes. Quick question, Derek. How far are they at once they start up in the spring? Are they ready to pave there yet? Are they ready to put some piece down or anything like that?
So, they have a huge thing that they need to do. I believe they have a little bit of curving that needs to be done. But other than that, they're, I think they said, from where they wanted to be at this point, they are for this, we'll call it for the season before spring 2022, they're about a week behind. So, they're pretty much on par. Once the spring comes around, they're going to finish the curving, they're going to put a pave, they're going to do the sidewalks, and then it, I'm paraphrasing, you know, I'm condensing a little bit, but it should be good to go from front to second, and then we have to worry about the rest of it.
City of Sunbury 250th Celebration Committee, updates on that?
I don't have any, please. Just once a month.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
There's no new unfinished business. So, new business, Councilman Barnhart?
I make the motion at Resolution 2022-03, additions to public nuisance list.
I second that motion.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
No, that's all right.
I should make a motion at Resolution 2022-04, updated public nuisance property will pass.
Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Martina?
Yes.
All right, so in the packet here, you'll see a letter opposing big trucks. So, Chief Air, chime in anytime if I miss something. So, right now, they're interested in looking to expand 18-wheeler weight capacity. Right now, they're at 80,000 pounds. They want to go up to 100,000 pounds or more, and also making them longer. So, we had an individual who, him and his committee is saying, want to fill us in on what they're doing, and how this could be very detrimental to our streets here, and not only in Sunbury, but other local, small municipalities that will beat them up. There's more wear and tear on the vehicles, and with that being, I'm excuse me, on the streets, and with that being said, there's not more state or federal money to help repair these streets from being beat up from these big trucks, or they want to expand the size of. Chief Air, did I miss anything?
Yeah, that's pretty much where we're coming down to. We're not, we know the trucking industry is of very little importance in Pennsylvania to some of the businesses that we do have in town, but it's just one of those things where they're making bigger and better, and the government has no way of funding municipalities to fix the roads and infrastructure, so it's a no-bran for us to oppose this, so.
So, there's two letters in here saying, that would go to Senator Gordon, Representative Paul, or Paul, for how we're opposing this, what they want to do. So, does anyone have any questions on it? Because then we would send these letters to them saying that we're opposing to that. And we, we were not the only municipality that they have contacted in the area. They contacted all municipalities. We just wanted to get on board with it right away before it sneaks by some bill in the state or in the federal government. Any questions? All right, so I made the motion to send these letters of support opposing the bigger trucks. Do I have a second?
Just for a way more business.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
All right. So, last meeting, we accepted to have the different city properties that interact with the public be disinfected on a weekly basis. After doing some research, we found that we could be more cost-effective by purchasing our own same disinfectant guns with the solution that we would own, and we could do it as frequently as we shall choose to. And the pricing is in there, I believe. Original cost was for it to be done from an outside, per cleaning company was $600 a week. We can purchase up to three guns and a cleaning solution for $600, and reuse them as often as we shall choose, obviously with the cleaning solution, it does the exact same thing. Any questions upon that?
I believe that they're, have re-operated and we're rechargeable without, instead of any stones. And I don't know what the solution is or the listing, but we could get three for them, or whatever, and have one of these building, or have a city employee.
Disinfect them in reality on a daily basis if needed, or obviously as often as possible.
$600.
And it's COVID-related. We could use, you want to correct there? All right, any other questions on this?
Just any response.
Yes.
Just one, a few responses.
Oh, that would have to be determined by whoever, like, for example, always be one here in City Hall, the police department, up at the rink, and down at DPW. So, it would be one of the employees in each of those locations. So, I guess it'd be up to the council member. So, for example?
We could have, I think we might put one, if we have one or two employees that could be doing it on a rotating basis, and be part of their.
The only thing I suggest is they should be either checklist or a log that shows days and.
Days and times when it was done. Okay.
Second.
Barnhart?
Wait, wait, wait. Does your motion include the undoing of the motion that was approved last time? Then you approve a motion to?
Was it on a?
A weekly basis.
A weekly basis, so?
So, you were going to hire somebody, approve that motion to, undo that.
Okay, then do this. All right.
I do know the same.
All right, so I make the motion to purchase these guns, these disinfectant guns, and also discontinue the service of disinfecting the properties.
Now, would that allow us to use that outside person until we get the guns and stuff operational?
Then you're changing your motion. So, the motion would be that you would continue to use the outside source until you have the guns and they are operational, at which time the outside source would be discontinued, and we would move forward with the city performing the service for itself. I put that in form of a motion.
I'll second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
All right, InfraDad Firewall 911 Center, Mr. Rafferty?
When InfraDad came in, they did not realize that there was a firewall needed at the 911 Center within the county, so we needed an additional firewall to accomplish having all department locations have the firewall. So, the addition would be $325 for the first month instead of activation fee, and that would be $75 monthly after. So, I'm looking for a vote in affirmative to move forward with that.
Question, any?
And Chief, you can chime in if you need.
Is our firewall that we had done, I think it was last spring, was small for the cleaning terminal, save the, so.
All right, I put that in the form of a motion to get that firewall. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
So, normally, Ms. Martina would be doing the Department of Public Works, but since we did not know at the time, I'll just cover it for now. So, DPW, purchasing of vehicles. Steve, I'm just going to turn over you so you can talk about that, and also the seal buggy at the same time.
Yeah, real quick and easy. You guys know we've been looking at upgrading the fleet. Right now, we're looking at replacing only two of the trucks. We wanted to do more, but unfortunately, Ford has pulled back their CoStar discount, because they don't have to put it out anymore. There's such a demand for vehicles, so it doesn't make sense for us to purchase more than this. Ford is telling us that they may re-bring that back in July for when you start ordering for 23s. They are stopping taking orders for 22s pretty directly here, any day. So, you know, we're replacing the two worst trucks that we have. They're 26-year-old trucks. They have over 100,000 miles. They're open plumb. We're getting the spreader on one of them and getting the frying system on the T-tag. We're not getting away from using any type of salt spreaders on our T-tags anymore. They're just too damn big to get up and down some of these smaller streets. So, that's the trucks. And then the seal buggy, this is for sealing the cracks in roadway. This is a $58,000 unit, and we can pick one up here used. It's a loaner model that they loan out to different departments. It has very few hours on it. We pick it up for $25,000.
What's that, truck or?
That is the seal buggy. That's for sealing the cracks in the streets.
Okay, now, is that, okay, that's, that's not Sunbury Motor?
No, that is not. That's Bradco. That's our normal supplier.
Oh, sorry, Steve. For the tar buggy, is that CoStar or not CoStar?
Um, that, yes, that is their CoStar's price, even though it's used, used these equipment.
All right, so, sorry about this. So, since the trucks aren't CoStars?
Well, they are CoStars, but they're only, it's a minor discount. It's only.
Oh, it's not as big of a discount?
It's not as big of a discount.
I thought it was no longer.
This is the same thing we're running into the.
Oh, so the discount isn't as big?
Every year, it's.
I thought you said it was no longer.
Yeah, this is why we're just replacing, absolutely completely need to replace now.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah, is the picture on the F-350?
Yes, sir.
And the 550? They're showing it as their XLT, which is a higher-end truck.
Well, the XLT package comes with the heated mirrors and things like that that we need for plowing. It makes sense to just buy that package, then opt in for one or two of the select things that we need.
So, he's saying it's cheaper to get the XLT package rather than getting the bare-bones and then putting that option on, correct?
And honestly, the prices are going to come in slightly lower than this. Brian's at Sunbury Motors, he is out with COVID, him and his whole family have COVID. Me and my family all had COVID the week before, so we're all just recovering and getting through this. So, I can bring these, I can and will bring these in slightly lower than what they are right now.
Any other questions?
This is going to sound like a stupid question, but what color are we?
The whole DPW department will now will be red.
Okay.
Every truck will be red. Here, here, moving forward.
Race red?
Race red, that's right.
The other red costs $100.
All right, any other questions?
Yes. Up to that point.
And this would be with liquid fuels?
Yes.
And then also, as you notice in the back, there's the Bradco. So, you have the U-Boy's on front, which will be for Sunbury Motors, but the secondary will be for Bradco for the other.
Any other? All right, so, yeah, so I make the form of a motion to purchase a 2002 F-550 XLT up to the price of? 2022, what I expect?
2022.
Oh, sorry. We're going in the wrong direction. Up to the price of $53,590, also including the 2002, oh my gosh, 2022 F-350 XLT up to the cost of $53,595, and the tar buggy. Oh, yeah.
For Bradco.
For Brad, oh. And the outfitting of Bradco of $25,000. And where's the tar buggy price?
$25,000 is the tar buggy.
Oh, it is. Oh, the tar buggy. All right.
And then you have the 19 for the 350.
Steve, can you say what is even, I'll put that in form of a motion.
For the, for the 2022 F-350, which price is $53,595, the upfitting of that vehicle is 19,895. The 2022 F-550, which is $53,590, and the upfitting is $56,977. And then you have the $25,000 for the seal buggy.
Okay, what about the aluminum box?
Aluminum box. Yeah, aluminum box is on there. That's in, that's in the upfitting.
One of the 550.
Yeah, that's in the 550. That's on Bradco's. Yeah, that's in, that's in the Bradco part of that. Yeah, that's the second part of that.
All right. I put that into form of a motion. Do I have a second? All right, I put that into form of a motion, do I have a second?
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martino? Yes.
All right, Councilman Reichner, uh, fee schedule.
Yeah, we had to make a change in the fee schedule because we don't already have a contracted engineer. Whereas we were, had a month to pay that company. Uh, so the, the only fee that's changing is the contracted hourly fee. The hourly rate depending on what the fees are, what we need, and the only thing is for me to use them. It'll be fifty and a hundred fifty dollars, everything else is the same. So I make the motion, uh, for, for the resolution for the change of the fee schedule.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martino? Martino? I don't know why, because I always think of Martino.
Uh, Councilman Reichner, uh, voices.
I think they're going to pay the invoices, two hundred one thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and thirteen cents from the general fund. And a one thousand forty dollars and eighty-one cents from liquid fuels. Make a motion.
Second.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Martino? Yes.
All right, put the table, so discussion items, so on the back, uh, public meeting to discuss the needs of the rescue funds. So obviously, we said once there was a full council, which we have now, we wanted to take the citizens' input on what they would see, they'd like to see the American Rescue Funds spent on. Now, with that being said, there's criteria in which those rescue funds can be spent on. So Derek, you just give a brief thing, what, what the, what the criteria is and where the information can be found at?
So, um, it's COVID, basically, you have to make an argument for COVID, uh, whether that is lost revenue, um, economic, uh, economic impacts, um, use it for COVID related as far as you can do it for vaccine sites, you can use it on equipment to limit COVID, um, things of that nature, um, and truthfully, quite a few other smatterings of things. Um, and, uh, broadband expansion, water sewer projects, um, and projects that get people outside, I should say, in recreational facilities. Um, that information can be found on the Treasury, US Treasury website, but it is in our file share on our website, the Final Determination, um, there is the full length version, which is four hundred thirty-seven pages. Um, and then it has the shortened, shorter snippet version that gives you the highlights that is on there as well. And then I put a sheet on there, um, for individuals that want to make recommendations to the council that, um, you can give a description of, of the project that you would like to see and ask for your basic, uh, contact information on their well named snippet.
Any questions on that, anyone? So I guess we need to determine a public meeting when we'd like to hear the, the public's needs for this.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, sir.
Because we have proposals also from two entities regarding, um, uh, overseeing our funds. Did you want that to be the same date as this, or would you like that before the next council meeting?
Let's just make it on the same date, so it's all COVID related topics. So, does anybody have a particular how, or how you'd like to do this?
We think we want to try and get it in as soon as possible.
So we want to go for next week sometime, so it gets people, kind of the plan?
What do we have going that's, that we have, you know, where you're going to have the meeting? When's that meeting, that, that's definitely where we're at for that meeting?
Yeah, I mean, that's two weeks from now that we're in. So I guess we could do it, uh, January thirty-first at six o'clock in the council chambers? Anybody opposed to that?
Sorry, what was that?
January thirty-first and the, uh, six o'clock here for the public. That's Monday, so next Monday at this.
At six?
At six, yes. No way, people have a weak, uh, plan, bring ideas.
Do you want to, is that, is that the deadline for ideas for individuals, or you want to extend it after that?
I mean, if they want to extend, that's just the time they can come and pay to council or discuss ideas, wherever it may be.
And then you can, at that.
We can determine when, here's the, yeah, definitely.
That works.
Any other questions on that?
You're going to take, you got a form for the fill out?
Yeah, Derek, I believe there's one in the city clerk's office about what, you know, your idea suggestion, wherever it may be.
Yeah.
So that's in there.
It's online, if anybody wants to print it out there or fill it out using, uh, Word or Adobe. Um, and then also, we have paper copies, uh, in the, uh, city clerk's office for individuals to come in and take.
Yes, and it gives them time to read the four hundred and some odd page document, right?
I suggest a short version.
Uh, any other questions on that? All right, uh, Mr. Backer, the RACP funds.
Um, so as everybody knows, we were awarded, uh, avoided, awarded, um, two million dollars of RACP funding from the state. Um, RACP is a reimbursement program, so in order to purchase the Salatex site from the county, um, we would have to front the one point five million dollars and then we're reimbursed by the state on the back end. Um, that, at this point, there's no timeframe as far as when we would have to purchase it. Um, it's really up to council at this point. Um, but in order to do, in order to, um, in order to purchase it from the county, obviously, we would have to go for, um, a loan at that point. I'll call it a third one. Um, now, I am in the process of telling out paperwork, um, from, uh, the state for RACP. We're in the second, we'll call it second portion, um, of getting the finite details down, uh, for RACP. Um, I'm working with the Office of the Budget, we have someone that we've been worked, I've been working with. Um, the paperwork has to be in by June seventh at latest, but I obviously want to get it before that. But they technically don't have to review it in total, um, if they don't want to or if they're inundated. Um, and you're probably looking at two months, two and a half months, maybe a little bit longer until you finally get the review done. Um, and then maybe a month or two after that paperwork, so you're still looking at probably about ten months out. So I would say by the end of the year, you have, you could actually submit for reimbursement.
One question I have, I'm a local treasurer troop, and I think we would recommend, uh, we look for a line of credit rather than securing a loan payment.
Do you see any issues with this?
The only issue I would have, and again, I just found out about this this afternoon, but I didn't do a whole lot of research, but in researching RACP availability, I know that we can use it for the purposes that it's, that we originally discussed, which was the purpose of Salatex, the refurbishment there, all of those things. I'm not sure we can use it to reimburse ourselves.
No, you, you submit, you submit to, um, so it, for land acquisition, so we don't, I'm going to make that clear, but if we had one point five million dollars sitting in the bank account, we could pay the county and then we have the paperwork that the state would need and we show we paid one point five million dollars of, for this property, which is land acquisition, which is allowed under RACP, and then they reimburse us with the RACP funding.
I understand, so it's not, we're not getting general RACP funds that we're going to reimburse ourselves from? It would be the reimbursement for the purchase of the specific property.
Correct, and they, and they, and they, and they, um, and it's not that they give us two million dollars, they do everyone with it. They hold on to the money and we have to basically submit the paperwork they want in order for them to give us the reimbursement.
I understood, my, my understanding of it was that originally we were going to be projecting the use of those funds, get the funds and pay them out, but instead, we're going to be reimbursed.
Yes, sir.
Understood.
So, Councilman Reichner, you want, like you said about the line of credit rather than the loan?
Well, I think we should do out, personally, rather than make any final decisions tonight, I'll give.
So do some more research, then go back again.
Check this stuff out, find out, first off, I don't know that we can get a line of credit, I don't know any games that we already have, but we have to find out what we can and can't do, but I, I am strongly against taking a loan out. Now, ten months later, we're getting out of group work, uh, once we'll sign up, we'll, we'll, uh, find a credit, so we'll.
Yeah.
We can support it until we start using it.
Yes.
That's, that, that's.
So you're going to get treasurer troop to look into it, get more information, and we can come back again and decide what we want to do.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Uh, council projects, so. No, I didn't know that. So on the sheet, you'll see, um, some projects that, uh, each of us put in for, that we want to start going, doing, cleaning, starting the process in for twenty twenty-two. So I'm just going down the list for me and then anyone else can speak about their own projects. So, um, obviously, we've been talking for a long time about updating and replacing the meters on East Market Street. They're in dire need to, so that's one project that I have in mind. Another one is, uh, the South Penn Street Bridge that we have been discussing about, uh, the camera system, uh, upgrades the city hall here, and also upgrades, uh, the skate park. About, I knew that was in, um, up for upgrades. Uh, Councilman Reichner, you can have me at the moment, but obviously, we can keep adding this list, unless you have something to bring down.
No, I, I do, I do have one, we, I'm actually, I, I'm very much, um, in favor of, uh, starting, um, getting a committee of stakeholders and get them involved with, in us information or help with the committee, help with the city and finding out what we can do for them.
Okay, so a stakeholders type committee for?
Bob Snyder had brought that up on, on, on Wednesday night, uh, trying to get that through so we could make the stakeholders involved. What I'm talking about is like, I want a college, uh.
Sunbury Motors, Sunbury.
But the hospital now, was UPMC at the time of the first initiation of the discussion.
Yeah.
But since they're not here anymore, this thing has two locations in town here. Get them involved and see what we can do for them, find out and then what they can do to help the city.
Okay.
But I think it's very important that we have.
Stakeholders committee type something.
And we can have some, we can have some other business people.
Uh, Councilman Barnhart, are you?
Uh, for the code officers, I'd like to equip them with, uh, waterproof vests, some tasers and some radios. They have pointed some pretty dangerous places and I'd like to see them a little bit more protected.
All right, and obviously, Ms. Martina, you weren't here at the time, but.
I'll ask this.
We kind of figured, yeah, we kind, we kind of figured, obviously, DPW to pay big projects in town. Uh, Councilman, I know you're under the weather for a little bit, you know, you know, bad times.
There we have some of the older projects here.
Yeah, and just the continuing ones from last year that can fall over this year, uh, the Reagan Street project, of course, the suite, uh, Sesquimana Avenue, Salatex, the traffic light up there, uh, South Second Street, Reagan in front, the traffic signal there, and the credit card system for each of the departments. So those are the, um, projects that we would like to start, finish in twenty twenty-two, so we have a vision moving forward of what we need possible funding for and so on and so forth. Questions?
I would like to caveat what you just said, um, just so the general public knows, uh, there is a finite amount of money that is out there for private grants, state, federal. So depending on the size of projects that the, the council decides to undertake or continue undertaking, um, not all of these may get done in twenty twenty-two, but if they decide to move forward with them and start looking into them, it is a longevity and, and long vision process that may take a little bit of time so to complete them, but it's gonna, it's unfortunate, it's just the way it is, um, but we, you know, we appreciate.
We can always start to talk in the conversations and get the ball rolling and the funding is there, then we can apply for proper funding at the proper.
Correct, so we, we do appreciate everybody's, uh, um, willingness to give us a little bit of time to complete.
All right, then moving on to the fire police radios, I know last time there were discussion of possible different funding sources rather than the American Rescue Funds. I just didn't know if any of those sources were available for funding for those things. I know, uh, Jerome, you spoke briefly last time, you could use this, I didn't know if you knew any more knowledge on that, if those funds can be used or. So they can be used for that, so we can get Bruce and Mary in contact with whoever they can be contacting.
They have money. They have money.
Okay, they do? Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
I don't know what's wrong here. You know, anything wrong? Well, if you're talking about relief money, then you're taking away from the fire service.
What time about the commission dollars?
I don't know how much they have there.
About sixteen thousand.
Fire police, sometimes.
Fire police are part of the fire department.
Yeah, I know.
So whether they take it out of relief dollars, not as, nothing to do with fire, they're entitled to it just as much as anybody else is.
And they said that they've been trying to get funding for the last, I believe it was three years or.
If you guys want to hold it up, that's against you guys, but.
They pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year for radios right now, they're almost done, but now we got air packs that are about, you know, eight. So there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in this kind of, so.
But they also have money in their own account too, the relief.
Is that?
They have money in their own account, relief as well.
Well, I'll, I'll send Bruce and Mary to you guys, and if you can give them the money, that's great. If you can't, like I said, it's something that needs to get done, I just want to know if there's other additional funding that can be used for, that's great. If it's not, well, we, we, if the worst case scenario, we have to use American Rescue Fund because it's been something that they've been trying to get for three years and they're just as important as everyone else. So I don't want to feel like, I just want to see if there's other possible revenue sources out there for funds, so that's all I have. Well, I'll send them, we'll send them your way and then we'll see if we can get it figured out, if not, we'll pick up our. Any questions, anyone? All right, so, uh, resolution, uh. All right, so resolution for the, uh, twenty twenty oh three S V E C P classroom funding, so.
Joel, can you speak about this? Yeah, um, apparently, on Friday, Jolynn received an email from the Sesquimana Valley Community Education Project stating that they've made significant progress and have successfully signed an MOU with Maryland, Marywood University. They're preparing to outfit two classrooms, a design church location in Sunbury for a nursing assistant training program and a computer lab. Beginning in February twenty-two, we are ready to use funds that were committed by the city of Sunbury for leasing classroom space. Um, the MOU with Marywood University and the Sunbury City Council's original were attached. The, in twenty twenty, excuse me, city council had passed resolution dash three, which said that basically SVCEP was a five oh one C three. They were working to complete requirements of establishing a community college. They identified Sunbury as a first launch location for the placement of a desire to accredit a community college. And the city council wanted to make evident and strong support and therefore, it was the intent of city council to award SVCEP the sum of six thousand dollars for the purpose of leasing or renting classroom space within the city limits, um, for an initial period of one year. Should the SVCEP become partnered with a university partner, which agrees to shepherd the establishment of a community college within the city limits. Now, um, I was asked today to take a look at this resolution and how it applies at this time. There was some question as to whether that offer was only open for one year, whether we were still bound by that, et cetera. My legal conclusion is that, yes, we are still bound by this resolution. No, it was not only offered for a period of one year, we were offering to pay six thousand dollars or up to six thousand dollars for the initial year's lease or rent. Um, however, there is a limiting structure here, and that is that we've only offered to pay that if SVCEP was partnered with a university partner to establish a community college within the city limits, not simply classrooms. Um, it's come to my attention that they are establishing classrooms in a number of local municipalities, of which Sunbury is nearly one. The, so what that means to me is that absent a specific notice from SVCEP that they intend to establish a community college within the city limits by and through their partnership with Marywood University, the council has the option of whether or not to fund this classroom lease at this time. I know there's going to be questions.
So with that being said, since they're only putting classrooms in the city of Sunbury, not establishing a full-blown college, correct?
I don't know that, and that's what I'm saying, being a mayor. I think in, I think we need to table this for tonight.
Okay.
And take the next two week period, right, it's only discussion anyway, but I don't think you ought to take any action into that. We should take the next two week period, see if we get something from them that says, yes, we intend to establish a community college here in Sunbury.
Not just classes.
And not just classes, at which point, Ben, we would be. And not just classes, at which point then we would be on the hook for the six thousand dollars. If they don't intend to do that at this point, intend to establish a community college somewhere else, at that point then it would become the responsibility of council to decide whether they still would move forward with those rental payments.
I would also like to find out, what our liability is in the timeframe, if, if, if that one year, I think when I, when we voted on this, I was under anticipation that they would be done within the year. If it wasn't, then they would have to approach us again for that money, but definitely where it was written is not that way. But I would like to also find out.
How long, how long that?
We're obligated, absolutely.
Joel, I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Since the resolution also, SVCEP has identified the city of Sunbury as the first launch location. If we weren't the first launch location, does that qualify as?
Not really, because there's no definition of first launch location. Does that mean we're one of first launch locations? Does that mean? I think that the limiting language is the specific community college within the city limits. There can be more than one, in my legal opinion, there could be more than one first launch location. They could say, well, this is going to be one of the first places we're going to do this. And there's really no legal definition for that, however, the establishment of a community college within the city limits is pretty clear. So that's what I'm handling.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions, anyone else? Light Fest Committee?
Can you get my report there? So I'm going to give the radar digest version here. So 2022 donations, we had seventeen donors ranging from Sunbury Steam Engine who donated the funds for the deer, which I really hate taking funds from the fire department, but they argue with me. So I have no choice because they say I'm doing it, so, but thank you to them. Also, the three hundred dollar, which is, was Danny's Hotel, sponsored the Santa House, was three hundred dollars. Santa and Mrs. Claus did not take any payment this year, so those funds remained into the Light Fest Committee because they, Santa and Mrs. Claus are vested in the city, so they did not take payment this year, so, okay. So grants, so we had the G-Spot and Betty Guyer Foundation, thirteen hundred dollars for books. That money has been spent, and we are going to finish up that report. We also received, this was 2021 grant, so Charles B. Degenstein, four thousand dollars, which we still have in the account that will be spent here shortly. Charles and Betty Degenstein, they gave us thirty-two hundred dollars, and that money was spent on upgrades to the Deer Pen, to the Santa House, for lights and cords and other items that were needed for this year. Rosenblatt Foundation gave us three thousand dollars for books. Twenty-five hundred is remaining to be spent, and that will be done shortly, and those books will be stored until next year. The second round of grants, so we asked for grant money again in December. So we were awarded, G-Spot and Betty Guyer Foundation rewarded us, awarded us seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that is for a reindeer, educational reindeer display that we're going to bring to the city this coming holiday season, and also for insulated containers that we will keep for events in the parks so that we can give off free hot chocolate and poppy. Typically KFC does that, however, their containers are smaller, and that's great, they will still make the hot chocolate, but we're going to have bigger containers so that we can offer that to more citizens. Charles and Betty Degenstein, twenty-five hundred dollars for decoration, and Charles and Betty Degenstein, another twenty-five hundred dollars for decoration. So at this time, the place that we get the decorations from, in February, we can get thirty percent off. I'm, we are well aware of the decorations are wearing out from the poles, and I want to explain that those decorations that get plugged into the pole that are lit up, one of those costs about two thousand dollars, okay? One is two thousand dollars. That Christmas tree that is in the park, they lit the lights up, our, the city Christmas tree, that was a forty thousand dollar Christmas tree. Okay, and that was before my time, but it was purchased, so just explaining the, the the cost of decoration, so we are, we are looking to order a few things, and we're going to keep adding on each year. So, so those funds for the second round of decorations, we're looking to spend here in February so we get that thirty-three percent off. The Santa House, this year, we have never seen this many children in the city of Sunbury. We've seen five hundred and fifty children at the Santa House, and we had answered forty-six Santa letters. And every child gets a letter back from the city, from Santa, and also a little gift in the envelope. And we had twenty-six youth volunteers that came and volunteered at the Santa House. So they dress up as elves, they come and they help hand out the books. So we're growing that pop, that youth and volunteering in our city, we had twenty-six youths, and they asked to come back again next year, which is awesome. So special appearances, we went to the Degenstein Library, Haven Ministries, Ark, Susquehanna Valley, Local Daycare, the Goodwill Host Company Breakfast, and Dash and Her Kindness Christmas Party. So in 2021, Programs and Additions, the Santa Parade, that was sponsored by Aubrey Alexander Toyota and the Grand Marshals, where the Susquehannan Valley Derby Dixons, I spelled that wrong on the original thing, I had Dixons, there was Dixons. So they were our grand marshals. We brought back the tree lighting ceremony, so the mayor and Santa lit up the Christmas tree and kicked off the holiday season, and again, very well attended, thank you to Sunbury City Band for playing Santa's Miracle Gift of Reading, a new program that we started this year. Again, we got grant money for that. Dr. Jessica Begonda de Fazio's office also donated two hundred and fifty dollars, Shiklemy Teacher Association in memory of John Hodge, and also we had several private donors who donated funds to that. Sensory Santa, we saw twenty children at the Sensory Santa, and that's for children with intellectual disabilities or autism. So twenty children came and received their private time with Santa and Mrs. Claus, very successful again. So 2022 was our plan, Second Annual Christmas in July, will happen July 30th here in Cameron Park. New decorations for Market Street, so we're looking at right now pricing of banners to replace the garland and bows and possibly new banners, so I've been out and talking with the help me business owners to get their input on what they would like to see, possibly, so doing that. Cameron Park, eleven Christmas trees, I never knew eleven Christmas trees would excite the city as much as they did, but they did. So we're going to continue those trees in Cameron Park and add on to that. Or again, our goal there is to create a winter wonderland in Cameron Park. The educational deer display will be coming this year, that date is to be determined. We want to expand the Santa's Miracle Gift of Reading because we are getting the grant money for this, so I think it would be great for us to partner up with the city, partner with Shiklemy School District, and also the Degenstein Library to provide books for youth in our community, so we're looking to do that. Youth Light Fest Committee, we currently have eight committee members, youth that are on this committee, that are giving input into what they would like to see as far as decoration and programming in our city. We'll continue to grow that, we also have the six adults on the adult Light Fest Committee. And thank you to all of those volunteers who came out this year and helped, because without them, we wouldn't have been able to do it. The Santa Parade, increased participation in that, add more floats, businesses, and sponsors. Tree lighting ceremony, Mariposa, I'll save the date to light the Christmas tree, November 26, 2022. So we're looking to add on to that as well, to the tree lighting, to the parade, to offer. I know the Moose is already, is going to be a vendor, so we're looking to add on to that to give more things. This year we had a petting zoo beside the Santa House, right after, so that helped the kids do something while they were waiting to get in. So, and then the other thing we're going to do is, Light Fest is going to team up with Ice Rank and help with the Ugly Sweater, Ugly Sweater event up there, so we're going to meet with them and hopefully be able to provide some funding for that as well, for the Light Fest, okay? So, so we're looking to, we want to make sure we're highlighting that Ice Rank. So special thank you, DPW, we couldn't do it without them, and Parks and Rec, the fire department, the police department, the city van, and Shiklemy Marchen Race, and that's what I have, so any questions?
No, but thank you, thank all your volunteers, Santa and Mrs. Claus, this is what it's all about, so thank you for all it. Everyone in the Light Fest Committee does, so thank you.
You're welcome, I'll extend that to them.
So announcements, so the city of Sunbury will be holding a local business meet and greet Tuesday, February 8th at 6:00 PM at the Midtown Beach Show at 315 Market Street. Please go in, there's going to be flyers, Derek's going to be calling businesses to help businesses get communication with one another, and also have the city get information from them that we can put on our website. So if you need something, go on our website, wherever the category is, they can see where it's at, the location, phone numbers. So it's going to be something nice to get the businesses all under one roof, for them to talk how the, how they can feed off each other, and also how the city can help them. So I'll be taking place, that'll be on our website, Facebook page, as I said, Derek, we're calling out, Jolynn, we have getting flyers made as well. We are accepting letters of interest for the following board vacancies in one year. We have one, one seat for a four-year term on the planning commission, one revolving term for the police pension board, must be an expert in the field, one seat for an alternate for the Shade Tree Commission. You can submit all letters at the mayor's office, attention to the city clerk, or email jbarner@sunburyea.org. The next council meeting will be held February 14th, 2022, at 6:15 in City Hall, and are there any public comment at this time? All right, we're going to start in the front and work our way back, so please take your, come forward, please state your name. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Rhodes, I own Jenny's Simply Smiling, so I, and I've received a letter from the code office. Vouch for new ordinance. And you want two hundred dollars from me, and every other business in town. Number one, I think we can all agree right now that every business in this town is struggling. And every other business in this country is struggling right now. And we all have to pass it on to our customers and our clients. Everything has gone up, inflation is through the roof, and we're all struggling. Now is not the time to attack us. Almost further. I see I have some fellow business owners. Now you're going to, where's my checklist? Now, I can comply with most of these restrictions and that's on your agenda here. I see you're going to send someone out from NEIC. Not to mention that two hundred dollars has to be paid in thirty days, which, okay, that's not much notice, I can handle that, but some people can't. But you're asking for a sprinkler system?
So I'll read it, I'll let you finish, but Councilman Reiter, please fill me in here. Some of the businesses, depending what their properties are grandfathered in, and some of these compliances are only for new construction. And.
You don't need sprinklers.
So when the inspector comes in, so for example, I can't think of a proper term ahead, so they, like the sprinkler system, some businesses will be grandfathered in, depending where they're at, but if they are doing new construction on a business or on a property, some of the criteria may fall into these categories.
For extensive renovations.
For extensive renovations, yes.
Okay, well then we all need separate forms.
That's right.
You can not do this to us.
That's right.
Do you know how many people panicked over the weekend?
Yeah, I understand, so one, one other thing, so this resolution and this ordinance was created back in, was started back in 2020. Now, citizens and business owners did show up to that, they expressed their concerns, and what their concern, the one example was the square footage in apartments above commercial units. They said it was too low, so we upped it. So then people, citizens showed up, they expressed their concerns. Two years later, now it's finally come, coming to it, I'm not saying you're not right to express your concern, but when we were creating it, we put it in the public, in the newspaper, we had multiple meetings on it.
Not everybody gets the newspaper.
It, it was online, it was on the newspaper, it was everywhere we could possibly put it. Now, it, like I said, we will hear everyone's concern, but at the same time, the ordinance was passed, and we'll listen to everything that you say, but now, the reason why we're doing this is, I'm not trying to, we're not targeting any business. What we're trying to do here is making sure our commercial properties are up to today's codes and standards, so tenants going into these properties know that this property they're going into is safe for their business to go in.
Then it should be targeted for landlords.
And as far as like the handicap accessible entrance, the parking and parking signs, are we going to be grandfathered in there as well?
I don't know what, I don't know what particular business you are, so I, I can't answer that question only, like you could possibly get ahold of our administrator, the state administrator, to say where your business is located, what will be your criteria to reach out, but I can't speak for every individual business, I'm just saying as a general statement, some of the things.
Because just for example, like seventeen years ago, when I, my business in, I was, one, not mandated by this city to do it, two, I was not mandated by the state. And when I was rezoned, I was rezoned right here in this room by the council, and I was zoned neighborhood business. And I was not mandated at that time to be handicapped accessible. So, you know, are they going to come back now and say, okay, you need to comply with this? Or am I going to be held response one or a different form?
I think it's under any changes you make. Just like, a classic example was when I'll be out, Jim, Mark Wahlberg bought the gym. There was one set of scanners, so when you started remodeling, he had to conform with the new scanners. If you start remodeling, it's going to bust. If you have an established business as it is, then I don't see.
So we're going to fall under the non-applicable column?
That would be, NEIC will make that determination because we can't, we can't, we can't.
So it's going to be.
We, we can't make that determination because we aren't the ones that are doing that inspection, NEIC is.
So you can sit here and tell me anything, but when the NEIC officer comes in, they can tell me I have to do it, is that what you're telling me?
From what, I talked to NEIC today, NEIC did tell me that there is a grandfather in portion to what was just referred to here. Now, to Councilman, or excuse me, Mayor, Mariposa's point, we can't go down each individual, you know, this property has this issue, this property has this issue. We're not going to have an answer to every single one of those because we outsource to the professionals to answer those questions, I should say, and that's the reason why we contract them to perform these inspections.
Well, I think that contract is crap, and I think the two hundred bucks that we're paying them is crap, and I'll tell you what, I really think you need to revisit this because I don't think it's fair to us businesses.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying you're incorrect in what you're saying or what you're feeling, but.
I think, I think you need to revisit it.
But the issue was, this is happening many years ago, like when you said.
Did you put that out for bed?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you said.
Did you put that out for bed?
But what out for bed?
For these contractors to come in and check everybody's building.
The professional services?
Yeah.
That was in place before I came into office.
Well, I want to know, was it put out for bed? Because anything you guys do, you put out for bed.
This is a discussion to come up here, you want to bring something up, but we're not going to have a, we're not going to have a yummy contest.
So if, so if this was not in when you were in office, and we have some new officers in now, why can't this be brought to the table?
Because that, two, two years ago when we did it, we had multiple meetings upon this, and only a few people showed up, and their, their concerns, they addressed them, and we, they addressed them and we addressed them when we were writing this ordinance. Now, problem was, for many years, and a lot of people don't like it now, because the city is following the ordinances and the laws that we have in place, and now that we're following them to get to the city where we want it, so we have a downtown that's ready to move into, so we are cleaning up our commercial buildings across this city. A lot of property owners, as yourself, are not going to like it, but this is something that should have been done years ago, but now, and now we're finally doing it, I feel your pain with the, the cost, but this is something that has to take place so we can get our downtown ready to go, as we always talk about, we want, we want to have the vibrant downtown. Whether we like it or not, this is the step in the right direction that every other community is doing in this area, but now we need to get on board, it's no different than the rental permits that we do every year, it's the fifty dollars, there's no difference. Now it's just for the commercial property, it's the same exact thing.
Well, I think you're looking at private businesses, I'm sorry to say.
They can inspect, and that is another hundred.
Next public comment, please.
I'm going to talk to Connor, same issue, I have a couple statements and a few questions. When I put my business here in town thirty years ago.
Oh, what was your name, I'm sorry.
Donna Briskel. Because I did more than twenty-five percent.
Because I did more than 25% reconstruction and remodeling, I had to follow the BAC codes. They made me put a ramp in, they made me put a 36-inch door in. I had to comply with all that. While I was in the process of doing that, a business across the street just opened the doors, painted walls, and they were allowed to open just like I was. But I had to go through all the extras because I remodeled. I don't know if you're aware of it, but a lot of businesses that are licensed, like me, like the lady that just left, we are inspected by the state. Every year, we have a state inspection. They have a license that's hanging, and it's inspection. They come in, they inspect, we have to have blueprints for our business. They have to require, they, they, they check out our bathrooms, they check out their square footage, how many employees we have, and how many patrons are allowed to come into our business. We pay for that fee every other year. They inspect us every year. Questions I have are, um, because we're small businesses, and these businesses now, now you, you want to welcome, and I just saw an article a week ago in paper, you want all these businesses to come in town, but that's, you're not, you're not being fair with all of us. Right now, there's a percentage of about 53% that is rental, that you're collecting rent on, you're collecting, um, your, your dues every year, 50, your rental fee, $50 a year. And the percentage of owners is much lower. Businesses have to pay, all of our businesses, we have to pay a higher rate for water and sewer, along with our taxes, along with our electric bill, along with our, our water bills, our heating bills, everything. Just because we're business. That's number one. Our water and sewer. Just to have a toilet in our, our own businesses, we have to pay extra. The state occupational of licensing does a yearly inspection that covers square footage, bathrooms, the number of employees, the number of patrons, that, along with our health and safety. Licensed businesses are through the state, and we have to pay a renewal fee every year, every two years. Um, are these inspections, um, are these inspections gonna be on businesses that are licensed in Sunbury and if not why?
So going back to your questions, just give them to our city administrator Derek Backer. He can reach out to our, any, our representatives and he can get back to you on those questions. Because I don't have those questions, those answers off the top of my head, because I, I didn't know what it was.
So, anybody that is business licensed.
Any, any commercial property in the city of Sunbury, despite how big or how small.
And we're, we're licensed through the state already. So why would we have to, why would we have to be re-inspected by the city?
It's not by, it's by our third-party inspector.
Code enforcement?
That would make $100 on everyone. No, not, not the city of Sunbury code enforcement. It's our third-party who does commercial building inspections, which is their specialty.
So did Sunbury hire this third-party to come and inspect their buildings? Is that what?
Yep.
Yep? That's what they do. They hired some more people.
No, we, they, we do, they're not, they're a contract, that's a long contract. So they're a contracted agency that do, do the third-party inspections, the commercial inspections.
So Sunbury hired the third-party?
Yes, we hired, we hired them. We had to hire somebody, so that was the person we hired. Next public comment. Please state your name.
Joey Arthur. Um, I just wanted to, this is my favorite topic, change gears a minute. Um, on your, um, the meeting, you're gonna have a meeting on February 8th. Wearing my SRI hat, would be alright if SRI had some, some folks there also to meet the business owners and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then, um, for the public meeting on the needs of the citizens, the rescue funds, I'm just curious, are you inviting specifically helping agencies like, um, like the United Way, like, are you working with them?
Anyone who wants to come. Like, like I said, it'll be on our social media sites. Hillary Francis puts it in the paper as well. So anyone who has any suggestions, what these ones would use for, in bumper categories, is invited to come and make suggestions with their suggestions.
And then finally, um, we mentioned the committee stakeholders. I just wanna remind you again that there is something called the Sunbury Community Partnership Forum. Started when our city administrator continued. And that is the exact purpose we have to do. Various actors that are acting in the capacity of building community and economic development in Sunbury, for them to have a forum in which they can collaborate with each other, cross-communicate. And, um, we are coordinating for the first meeting of this year for February 23rd. So I would really like to work with you and work with Derek to say, let's, you know, work together to make this one a strong forum, bring those stakeholders together, to have those conversations, and find those areas in which we can collaborate for the best interest of Sunbury. That's all I want to say there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment, who's next? Please state your name.
My name's Tami Coonton. Obviously, I'm from Little Addys. Um, I do not endorse bringing buildings up to code, so to speak. I think your timing is pretty bad. Um, based on most businesses pay taxes, and I guess that's in the letter, I'm a little confused. Because it states, if we paid our taxes, then that's when we have to come up with this $200. So the way it words, at least to me and my husband, if we don't pay our taxes, we get out of this. So I'm a little confused with this.
What do you mean, if you don't pay your taxes? I'm confused. What, what, what are you asking?
The requirements for this inspection, first of all, 30 days to come up with $200. I'm scraping pennies right now just to get this building ready. Still have drain issues, but apparently it's on my own, not the city. So, and the fact that you guys just gave $50,000 away that was supposed to vote businesses to a sweep project, you're not really helping businesses, but now you're demanding this $200 to come out of our pockets right away. I don't see how you guys are helping us at all.
So, once again, two years, I mean, I'm re-hearing, two years ago.
I get, I get, two years ago.
Yes.
The pandemic happened two years ago.
We can't foresee a pandemic. We can't, the way of life does not stop.
But the past, such a big ordinance, when your attendance was down, or nobody could even really attend a meeting, and then you come out blindsided, you just passed it. Like, that's not fair to give anybody anything. And then also, my next question, now I've rented for four years. Nobody's come in and inspected that building at all. So now my question is, going forward, for the businesses that rent, are they now responsible to upgrade that building? Or is it the actual business building owners?
Now, I'm no expert, Derek. It's to be the property owner, business property owner, whether it's their responsibility to fix it up now. Whether they pass it off to the tenant's responsibility, that's between the business owner and the property owner. We don't have any control over that. So whoever is the ownership of the property, it is their responsibility to bring it up the code, whether it's not grandfathered in, or whatever it may be. So if the property, it's the property owner. Now, whether something happens with the tenant is something different. And I agree with the first question, the question before.
No, just the fact that, you know, I think we should reiterate and try to give time for businesses to come up with this. Because first of all, building materials, everything, I can speak from personal experience. It is nothing to spend $10,000 on a furnace that should have cost $4,000. But yeah, we're still doing. And now we have all these other fees. My taxes alone are $11,000 on a building. When I can go to Milton and spend $1,600 on a building, Riverside even, same square footage. This, if we don't reiterate, will drive businesses out.
Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, is the fee not our set? Isn't that the third-party inspector fee, which is the fee, the standard fee for any?
$175 of that $200 goes directly to NEIC, the other 25 is the processing.
Which again, we didn't fit out, so we could possibly get that fee to work.
Professional services, we don't have to do.
If it's a 10, if it's a $200 million business in town, are they gonna pay $200 compared to a $50,000 business?
There's different criteria, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, depending what the business is, what is in there, there are different criteria, correct?
As far as fees go?
The fee. Or if, like, if they have multiple units, X, Y, and Z, it's additional charge, correct?
Yes, additional inspection is, uh, three, $200 for up to three units. $25 fee for every additional unit over a fee.
What about the size of the business?
I, I.
There is, there's no. If you take them over to inspect this building, then would do, who expect them one room off?
Alright, so right now, we're, we're on.
So where does the other $25 go?
It comes to the city for our processing fees, paperwork, and all of it.
We'll be paying for you. We have to pay you for you.
That's the whole reason.
Well, yeah, obviously, if you're looking at rescue funds, please keep in mind.
Also, not saying.
We had three bits since we've Sunbury already this past year. Country covered in Lewisburg, never in my life would I have imagined they would be closing their doors, but they are. We are struggling, so this is not the time.
Oh, they're freaking. Next public comment. Please state your name.
Hi guys, Grant Munich, a certain business owner. You would not believe the title bills that I got to. Anyway, I just need a couple clarifications. I'm all up for people, because I'm a city manager, so I have so much to learn. Uh, so this certificate compliance, how does that differ from a certificate of occupancy? Um, for example, let's say that I just rented to a commercial tenant within the last month, two months. And they got a certificate of occupancy from NEIC. Are they gonna get re-inspected now and we have to pay another fee?
So, that, so I have that question in to NEIC, and it's gonna be a case-by-case basis because they said it depends on basically what was inspected. So if there was, um, because there's certain inspections that they do is not, as they put it, all encompassed. So, there could be a inspection that happened that they just had to look at certain aspects where this they need to look at more. Um, so if anybody has that concern, because I, I have gotten that concern today, um, I, what I'm going to be doing is sending NEIC the addresses and say, basically, I don't have control over this, this is their bag. Does this meet the standard of, of, you know, what you would be inspected for? Therefore, they would not need to be inspected again? And whenever that, uh, if they don't need to be inspected again, say it was November 1st that this was done. Um, it would be three years from November 1st that they would be re-inspected. Does that make sense?
My other thing is, you know, initially when we saw this ordinance in 2020, everything as it's working on, commercial buildings, you know, you know, downtown, first floor, whatever. But now, you know, I get the definition, commercial buildings is also anything strictly residential, three units or more. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I have, it's also my understanding that NEIC will not go in apartments. Okay. So if I have, for example, a three-unit building with a common stairwell, I have to pay $200 for them to walk up and down a set of steps?
Yes, they only, they would only check the common areas, they don't, they won't check the, the.
Okay. No, Mr. Parker, with the code office, okay? When they, when I pay my rental permit fees and they inspect my building, when they walk through the common area and they see, for example, a broken handrail, uh, smoke detector with a blinking light, they're gonna break that up, right? That's gonna be noticed as part of that rental inspection. They're looking for those.
They check common areas.
Right, so, I don't understand. To me, that seems like a double dip. That now I'm paying twice, I'm having an inspection on that hallway twice a year now, instead of once a year. Well, twice a year, then every three years twice, and so on and so forth. Same with, uh, like, let's say that I have a four-unit that has private entrances on the outside. There is no common. What are they inspecting? Are they looking for peeling paint? Because the code office does. What, why am I paying twice?
I was arguing, it wasn't brought up because I have someone like Brad. And a four-unit is the trigger by law, is what triggers our double inspection. And I don't think it's been worked out yet because I know you and I are paying the city to do a rental inspection. And now we're gonna be coming back to the common area. Now, I have common areas in both of my floors, so, still, you got a valid point there. I don't have an answer for you right now.
And I mean, that, to me, I just, don't get me wrong, like, commercial units, we want them to be safe. And they're, they're not getting inspected, I, I understand, okay? But like, to come back and re-inspect something that you're already looking at, man, you guys are getting an extra 25 for that on top of what you're getting from my rental permits. And I'm gonna pay all that off twice plus the NEIC fee. So, I mean, I really think that needs some clarification, revisiting something, because I don't wanna pay double, I'm paying tax, double, and risk. And they just wanna be, bring NEIC in here for an evening, bring the owners, the businesses in, name also. Four units, five units, six units.
Yeah, three units.
Three.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
That's what, that's what the code says, straight up. That's what the law says. Anything over two days in this.
It's in the city, it's also, it says a property with three or more residential rent matters.
And you know, I disagree with three, but I, I think by bringing NEIC down here and you're ever bringing those questions. And some of these young ladies are asking questions about their business of work. You know, if they have a door that's illegal now, but it's grandfathered. Now, if you put a new door in, that changes things. As we know.
Absolutely.
And I know when I read, of course, I knew the letter was coming, I hadn't seen it before, and I read it the other day. About the same, so I can see some people petrified, especially in the sprinklers and so forth. That's grandfathered too. Without taking, you know, renovation. Rebuild four new units, rental units inside of a building. That falls under a separate code, so. I think the whole thing needs to be.
And, and, I'm, and I'll look, uh, I'll ask NEIC that specific question. Because to your point, um, it would be, um, not, it would be a portage for our code to just go into, uh, units. And if there's issues in the common area, that especially if it involves fire safety, to not do anything about it just because it's a common area, it's sent in NEIC. So, um, just for the pure public safety and fire safety side of it. So, um, let me, uh, let me talk to NEIC on that point, um, and see if I can get some clarification on that. And we'll probably have NEIC on it.
Probably trying to do is have prior to the council meeting, in our, in an hour's time. Instead of having it after you're told like before.
I think they all have the question. I was gonna ask you, Brad, and I mean this in all sincerity. Do you have any suggestions how you would do this? Like, I never envisioned a one hallway common area that you'd be dealing with for NEIC. Never.
Personally, if, if the building is strictly residential, I understand it's also a first, but it's over three years. But the code office is already adjusted. I don't see any, uh, higher levels.
Yes, you are. But look, my, like, if we, with our inspector. Mike, if we do those inspections, do you inspect for safety, issues like fire and structural and all that?
You have your whole plan in the hand, um, uh, life safety. Make sure the pepper egresses that are there are clear and working great.
The other question I have, I'm sorry, Brad, that's all questions after you, but I wanted to ask the other lady a question, if you don't mind. Ma'am, I believe it's Ms. Driscoll?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
The, I understand where you're coming from. I've been taking notes on everything everybody's saying, okay? And I'm not a member of the council, so I don't have a vote in anything, but I do give them legal advice. My question to you is, if we're going to do, I guess, I'm gonna put it this way. For the city to do commercial inspections, we can't simply do the buildings that are dilapidated and falling down, okay? We're not allowed. That's discriminatory, okay? We have to do commercial inspections in every commercial building. That doesn't mean, of a. I guess what I'm asking is, how can we, do you have a suggestion for how to get around making the same requirements of your small business that we would of a larger business? And I'm not being a jerk when I ask.
I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Like, in my building, it gets inspected however over off that he comes over.
Once every three years.
Okay. And I pay the weekly because I have a rental there. Down the bottom, I have my, my business downstairs, okay? I have a state license. I cannot speak about anybody of, any other businesses because, for instance, um, Maria, everybody knows Maria, Sunbury Sub. Her building has, I think, four, three or four rentals, they get all inspected, and she's downstairs with her small business downstairs, right? That building pretty much is already inspected, whether he goes into the, to the, um, into her, her, her business, because he doesn't inspect her business. But I believe for her, she has to be state inspected every year because she's a restaurant. So the state inspection inspects her. The state inspection comes to me every year, not every, every, every other year or with three years. They come in my business every year, and if I'm closed, they call me. They come in and they inspect every year. They have my blueprints, they know how many bathrooms I have, they tell me what, what, what this and that and everything else. So they, they check for the fire, they check for, for every, they, they check for everything. So other businesses, I don't know if they have a state license. I don't know, I, I think that should take very much in play with, with somebody, whether they have a license or they don't have a license, I, I don't know.
And I apologize, I don't know what your business is, but may I ask, what kind of license do you have?
A hair salon, right?
Salon.
Yes. And every year they have to come and do that.
Be licensed by the state, so I think, I mean, it should be taken into consideration, and if you, if you have a license by the state, we're mandated by the state to hold different standards. So if you're, I think if you're inspected yearly by the state, um, I think you should have a different standard than a business that doesn't. So I don't know, it's like Sunbury Motors is like, is inspected yearly by the state? Or, I, I don't know how it is with restaurants, I, I don't know how that is. As opposed to.
The restaurants in the town are inspected by the city health officer. The only state license would be is if you have a frozen dessert permit, that would give you, that the state came in and inspected my ice cream shop, but they didn't inspect the squeeze in. It was purely for the frozen dessert permit. So we follow them, we're in the city, we follow them at the city health department.
Right.
Do they inspect it as far as, like, uh, fire extinguishers and things like that, they're very costly.
And I believe, I'm just questioning whether they also inspect the structural issues, the electric, the things that NEIC would be inspecting, and I'm not saying they don't, I'm saying I don't know that they do. When they come into a beauty salon, do they inspect those things, or do they look at whether you're cleaning your scissors or whatever they look at? I'm not making fun, I'm just saying, I don't know what the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so that would be something we're going to need to find out.
Can I just introduce some stuff to you? This was started, this, this was started when I present though, and Mike, and it was because of public concern about the lack of safety in certain businesses within the city. And basically, they were businesses that rented, okay? A commercial business that was renting, and that was the original plan for this thing. Any commercial rental had to be inspected on a annual basis. And owner occupied businesses were going to be treated the same as owner occupied homes. We don't inspect owner occupied homes. We inspect rentals. The other thing was, by law, we could not go in, I'm going to, to the building that has specifically condemned and is closed right now, we could not go in the commercial side of it because we didn't have any authority to do that. We could go upstairs to their rentals and inspect, right, lately? Okay, so what we tried to do was establish a commercial rental policy that was affected just strictly commercial rentals. And then I went to a different department, and it evolved into with all the blight and all the problems that were coming back from the blight, it was added, all these other, all these other conditions were added. And like, uh, some, a Joel, somebody said here, you can't just go in and inspect if you set that parameter up, you can't go in just to inspect the problematic buildings. I, I can't say I'm going to inspect Dave's building but not inspect Bob's because Bob's is up to snuff Dave's knees, we, before we couldn't get in at all. So what evolved out of that probably too much thinking on the thing, get the system straight, and then that's what I would go. But it was originally set up for commercial rentals. And, and we had thing in place, but I think the question was the fee of the pileup on correctional. So it got tabled and it never got addressed again until maybe a year and a half ago or so.
And maybe, I'm sorry, Rick, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Maybe what we needed is look at, man, I hate to even say this, but look at separating our commercial ordinance, at least between, I don't want to say types of businesses, but structures. So as I'm thinking about it, Sunbury Motors would be different than a hair salon contained in somebody's house. And I'm just, and please don't take what I'm saying for gospel, because I'm just the attorney, I don't get the vote, okay? But I guess what I'm saying is, in order to make that happen, and in order to answer the questions that are being put out to us tonight, obviously, there's a lot of people here with a lot of concerns. And I've discussed this with the mayor, just sitting here, my suggestion would be, table it until I and council or representatives of council can schedule a meeting with NEIC, any state inspectors that agree to come, in our code office. In the interim period, we would table the inspections, and we would accept by email a, any suggestions or concerns that anyone may have. And the reason I'm saying by email, and I want everybody to understand this, if I say we're going to have a public meeting with the state, NEIC, and the code, we're going to have a public meeting with code and me, because the state and NEIC aren't going to show up, okay? They've already told us before, they will not show up for public meetings. So, um, and that's not really NEIC, that's really the state. But the point being, if you give us your concerns, and we table this for ten hours, okay? We can address it, and I can't promise you we're going to make everybody happy, because somebody's going to be mad, alright? And somebody's going to be unhappy no matter what. But I think I can speak for the council in that, I was trying to think everybody's, this has been a several year long process of coming up with a commercial ordinance, and what it's for isn't to put anybody out of business or to charge anybody extra money. Believe me, if we can do the inspections ourselves, if we had somebody authorized to do what NEIC does, I'd say do it for free, do, just get it done so that we make everybody's life safe. But we've had Sunshine Core, we've had Dollar General, we've had other places where it's a freaking safety hazard, okay? And we didn't know, and the state inspected Sunshine Corps, and the state inspected Dollar General, and they were falling down around their ears. So the point I'm getting to is, if council is willing, I'm willing to delve further into this, to talk to NEIC, to talk to the state inspectors, to see what they cover, and to meet with the code office, see what is superfluous in that, as Brad said, if we're doing the same inspection twice on his property, it wouldn't be necessary. But again, everybody's going to have to understand, and then I'd suggest after that, we do one of those meetings where there's no voting and we just talk.
Work session.
Uh, work sessions. And we can tell everybody what we came up with, and again, list of the concerns. But nobody wants to drive businesses out of Sunbury. Nobody wants to do, nobody on this council wants to do anything that's going to hurt anyone. But we want to make it safe, we want to fix the facade, we want to do the things that we can, and a lot, I mean, I can tell you this, a lot of what we talked about was banks from Florida that own a building downtown that's fallen down around everybody's ears, okay? Those are the kind of things that were really discussed with this. And in order to get to them, part of the problem is we have to go through some of you. And that's an issue.
In this process, you have to be fair enough.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, and I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
There's a difference between us and the Edison.
And what I'm saying is I agree with you, and that may not have been fleshed out to the best of my and your, our ability.
No, but this ordinance being, uh, frozen, like, in a.
That's a table.
It's not going to table, it has to remain.
Suspend, suspend it until further.
That's what I was saying, that's what I was saying, I would suggest that.
Let me ask a stupid question.
Nothing stupid.
What is a commercial property?
Anything that's for business purposes. If you're not living there as your house. Oh, Mike has the definition, that's.
Definition of commercial property, I apologize, Mr. Driscoll, and you're in my office today, I have this handy with me, uh, due to the, uh, due to the invasion of, under phone calls or more, and. But definition is any structure, building, or premises that is zoned for commercial use and that is subject to regulations under applicable fire building codes include use of both public and private property.
So our businesses being that we're a neighborhood business, we wouldn't be zoned commercial?
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't be zoned commercial?
No, the city has, the city has, uh, five zones. They have R1, R2, they have central business, neighborhood business, highway commercial, and the common base, so to say.
So you're the neighborhood business one?
Yes.
And non-neighborhood business.
Yes.
And those are considered commercial. Residential is not commercial, but in residential, for example, in a residential neighborhood, you have to get a special exception or a barrier to what a business is in, okay? So you, and you might have a residential property in one of those zones, but the point is, basically, if you use the property to make money and it sits in one of those zones, it's commercial. I mean, that's the long.
I'm in a lot of zones.
Right.
A lot of zones, I don't like being in them, but I'm in. Because I wasn't in when I came here, but now I am, twice. And the thing that happened with the slider today is it came as a shock to me. It was stunning, actually, because I'm thinking, I just went down to pay rental permits, and now I got another one coming. Well, is it every year?
Every, every. Every, every.
The inspection is every year, but the payment's every.
No, it's three years.
Every, every, every year.
It's an inspection every three years.
So these guys are coming around together to save money.
Was, the main reason was the Dollar General, because we put my unit in that we all wanted on the first floor. And to say we had complaints, but until you're still busy.
The problem is, you had to pull all of us down when you go after one first.
It wasn't established that. Anything that was owner occupied was not going to be looked at, it was the same thing as owning your own.
And I would like to caveat, we're not going on, we weren't doing this to go after one first. It would, it, no, it was just to go.
I would say, as an example, when that type of situation is going to occur.
So as Joel said. That's what, that's what I'm going to say, so as, so as Joel said, we're going to table fees, we're going to table the inspections until you, you may. Oh, I'm missing. Alright, so, this, 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 the same area ones continue to say the same thing. So we're, what we're going to do here is table it, the inspections, the fees, and then Joel said, submit your complaints in email to our city administrator, Derek, so.
Or via the website, because I got.
Yeah, or via the website, so they're on record and then.
It's currently under construction, so.
Now, the, the contact those portion is not.
The, we're just, we're just updating it, but like I said, you can still do the comments, the concerns, either to the website or to him, on these issues, that way we can, they can address it with NEIC, the inspectors, whoever else were showing up, and we can come back to a work session and, and fix the issues that you guys complain, not complain, your concerns about.
Mike Chubb, uh, we're at the park with, we've been in Sunbury for six years. I have garages that are vacant on neighborhood business, nothing in them, no electricity, just people. Am I going to get charged for them, I already got one letter, and also I use that garage for to put the trucks in in the winter. And I've already had them inspected up.
And that would be like the concern, like, the thing we, that's what we need to hatch out with them.
Because it makes me want to, I'm a second generation, I'm a third generation, I mean, I don't want them to move. I mean, they're in here, it's just like they're six.
As I said, that would be like the concern, let us know so we can address that, when we talk to them about your situation, it's just the garage you're parking your vehicle in.
I mean, I remember this how it would be great, believe me.
You're not conducting business out of that garage. You're not conducting business out of that garage.
So it's like.
I played, I go down, I put them in.
You're not, you're not, you're not conducting business.
I, the only thing I can tell, though, because.
Alright, so, hold on, Rick, yeah, like I said, just have them express, express their concern, that way we can say, here, here's the situation, then, then they can say what city. Yeah, I will go with that. Alright. Alright, so next public comment, I'm sorry, Brad, were you finished?
No, I'm good, thanks, guys.
Alright. Alright, so, okay, so I made the motion out to suspend the, the commercial property inspections and fees until a later date, do we have the clarification on the, what exactly will be inspected?
It'll be at least, I would say, for at least sixty days, to give them thirty days to come in with all of their concerns, and then give me time to go through, and meet with the inspector.
Put that in the form of a motion, Brad, a second.
Right, there?
Yes.
Barnard?
Where is?
Martina?
Yes. Alright, that's a company.
Okay, I just got a couple of concerns, that two hundred dollars is ridiculous, and I'll be like anybody else, okay? My business, since you guys worked on Chester Street, has been down for the last few years, and then this pandemic really helped even more. Okay, you guys just want to keep getting, you know, you guys want to fix your, because you go after taxpayer, and you get grants. Now, you're saying this is a safety issue about these buildings, wanting to buy grants. And I'm only going to do the same one thing, and I, I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody. Because I did last time, I went to make a comment, I was told that I was a small business, I have one of the city officials, they're still sitting here, that I have to keep my mouth shut, I'm not going to trouble them. Hey, I don't care less about that, I'm big, I can handle myself. My business might not, but I got five hundred, six, seven hundred customers, I can help you. Okay? You guys want to talk about blank buildings that are junk, you guys have a police department, hey, you guys spent nine hundred thousand dollars on it. Hundred thousand, it fixed up the old one. That's minus, you guys want to waste money, but now we don't pay you. Okay? Did you guys get an estimate from other companies other than, who one you got coming around, NEIC?
NEIC's been with this company.
Doesn't matter, when you guys go to do something, you guys get estimates.
Mr. Heller, may, may I answer that question for you?
Sure.
Okay. In March of two thousand seven, the state, the state adopted the UCC, which is Universal Security, okay? With that, they mandated all communities to have either their own official certified in commercial residential inspections, okay? If they did not have them, the communities were mandated by the state to hire a third-party inspection agency with those certifications. Back when this happened in two thousand seven, the city was not in that position to fulfill the need, or fulfill having someone go to all the trains, because it takes years to get all of the certifications. So they hired on, our first third party was BIU, um, and the city council, like, maybe probably, maybe ten years ago now, they put it back out for bid, um, on contract for the city, which NEIC, uh, was awarded the contract, and they've been doing our commercial inspections since. So they, they, it was out on bid, and the proper, the proper procedure was completed by the city council for that.
It was done for this purpose here, it was put out for bid, not for when you guys hired.
No, no, that's a part of the contract. That's part of the contract through NEIC, that they would, they would handle all commercial inspections.
And I don't want them contract.
That would be a big, big excuse, Mr. Heller. So we're, we're going in circles, I said, we're tabling this to a later date, so we get this all figured out with your concerns. Please email or Mr. Vacher on the city website with your concerns, so we can address them. Joel can do it, so we can get this all settled out, we, we, we're, we're hearing your concern, we're, we keep going, everyone, we keep going in circles with the same concern, that the ordinance needs to be revamped and looked at, so they're not getting double inspections, and when the inspections are due, so we're going to look at this again, but we just keep on going in circles back and forth, so if, if there's anything else besides this, if you'd like to comment on, let us know. So, if, if there's anything else besides this, you'd like to comment on, let us know, or else, give your concern to Derek, and we can, we can review it, we can look at it, and address that situation then.
Okay. I just had, no, no disrespect for anybody here, okay? Because I really don't care about city council, okay? I really don't. Because this town is no longer city, Sunbury almost, you like smoking, but that's not here then. I mean, you're new, as far as me. Uh, you were in the city council, so you know what the deal is over here, okay? Everybody does, okay? I'm not afraid of my mom, what, so are you gonna come at me? Hey, nobody, but, well, here, Derek, everybody says about this month, okay? You guys, you're always saying, well, you have to do this, you have to get everybody. No, you know, I have a state license, and I'm told that I gotta take a test every five years to keep my license. But, they take all that, add a few or twenty-five years or more, you didn't have to. My garage is only twelve years old. Okay, I have no problem with them coming in, and the IC, those guys are great. Okay, the last time I done some work in my garage, I had one to move from the code's office, and they parked their truck there, they get out, and they look to see what I'm doing, they said, you know what I would do? I'd park a truck here and do it. Never told me to get a permit.
Thank you, that's public comment, please. Please say your name.
Hello, sir. Mayor, this is Demos Palaguias. Ten days ago, I decided to take my signs down from the car for the corruption and things like that. And, uh, last, uh, January seventeenth, nineteen, I go in the building, put somebody to look in, and I go to fifth floor, and everything is trashed again. Take the fire, the fire hose, and bust all the doors. Now, I want to know if, like Giuliani, who ran with New York after the term of, where your child are. So, why those kids, like the ex-mayor saying, coming on the, from the wall and cleaning the roof, and stories like that? So, why we pay the welfare for those, those family, and the kids run like a hyenas, coyotes, and destroy the sandbag?
Mr. Demos, we do not have any control over, as you said, the welfare, we don't have control over that. All we can control is the things we control. We cannot control individuals going into your building. We can only catch them, you know, some information, yes?
I stopped. Too long with my car.
Yes.
So, and I want to meet you one day
Okay.
with the chief, to talk about what's going here.
We can do that.
And now you're mayor, and you can send the city, try to be like a Popeye.
I've written more Spanish than you.
And, and some...
Yeah, so, get with Joel in here, and she'll set up meeting up with myself and Chief Perry, and we can discuss it, okay? Thank you, Mr. Demos. Any other public comment? Please say your name.
Um, uh, to sell X property, do you, do you require...
Yes, sir.
See, I'm not afraid to tell them, really gonna do it. That's right. I made you four. I'm a small business, but I got five or six hundred customers.
Whatever is entailed in the property, for that lot, we will be acquiring, whether it's in the city of Sunbury or Upper Augusta Township. Yes, a portion of it is, or some that's in Sunbury.
And I think it might be advisable to have a joint Upper Augusta-Sunbury municipal authority for that redevelopment. Like the rail authority.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, one more thing.
Yes, Mr. Demos.
I would ask the, Miss Victoria, couple of years ago, one of who resigned, they throw the whole bush, you should make a big deal, they never get the bars and things like that. Now, they, they trashed the building. She not wanna call the newspaper over there to say what's going on here?
Mr. Demos, we can, when we, when you and I and Chief Perry sit down, we can address those things, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Demos, Victoria Rosenkreis made an issue out of your building.
Miss Victoria, Miss Victoria, we don't address, we don't address the citizens, just address us, please, for public comment at this time.
I have no comment.
Okay. Any other public comment at this time?
My God.
Embarrassed. You had a flag hanging upside down, that was the issue.
I do any purpose, and you, you not respect the nation. The, 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 the flag represent the nation, and you don't say nothing, you see everything they destroyed, you don't say nothing.
Mr. Demos, Mr. Demos, quick, Mr...
Okay.
She said something first.
Demos.
So, we intend, uh, SBC, these permanent wards, they would like to have a... We would like to have distributed while having classrooms around the new one, so I mean...
It's celebration, I'll find out who's being a mess. All the security, we're gonna need anybody else.
What's what? Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, by spring, we're ready to do the offer. Providing.
I saw that with the women.
Getting there.
We can discuss it.
Stop.
I, I'm gonna need some, and I wanna look over a little bit more than I can before I talk.
Oh, okay.
I saw, I saw, I saw you...
France won't be in the newspaper.
I said to my buddy, I said, man, she give me good stuff, you got... I'm like, I was kinda jealous, I'm like...
I saw, I'm like, oh. All I could think of, I need shelves. Again, we're, we're too many. Three hundred dollars for shelves.
I'm like, I wish, I wish I were, no, you need a shelf. Like, what, you look like a metal shelf?
Well, like, yeah, ideally, yeah. We need to put like, all of our syrups and stuff in the room, so, we get like, workout bags, like, rough. But it gets really cool in the winter.
They turn this down into a rug shelf. I just don't, I wanna shelving up and down, just go.
Any other public comment at this time?
See if I have anything left, I'll let you...
Well, see, I would have had the enjoyment, but hand ripping my pants.
That's exciting.
I just wanna feedback what Ms. Alford said about the partnership forum, and bringing, you know, players to the table and all of that, and also the thing Sunbury Committee. Again, so, can we, I, I think what we need to do is you have a lot of players, so, I think we all need to come together and not reunit. And save a lot of time, because the players are... So, you know, it's a urging council to do that. I'm just listening to projects. So, one thing that I'm hearing a lot out here, and I know this was potentially brought up for sleep reasons, but I don't know if that's on anyone's... Down or something, but, uh, that's a thing that I'm hearing over and over again. And also, just actually, I can tell you, I'm not necessarily worried about this, don't put this in there. Because then we'll probably go back and later, yeah, one, four years ago, I think, this inspection.
So, what's the thing? So, my learning, they need to pay these fees, they never get a certain price. Now, we did actually have this person come, who are electrical meters, and he specifically told us how to go ahead and let them go. No, that's right. But, no, that's exactly, but they tell me in thirty days, and I'm like, I'll pay it. Dude, I just passed eleven grand. Only fans are checking, so, like, I don't know what else to do.